It's five thirty, the date is August eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. The location is the Burton Core Conference Room, the Bonner County Administration Building on Highway Two, City of Sandpoint, State of Idaho, United States, North America, third rock from the sun. This meeting is being recorded and streamed via, streamed live via Zoom and YouTube. Uh, the audience stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Ready, begin.
I love allegiance to the lighting of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and a just law.
You're seated. Have our roll call from left, please. Commissioner Webster, Commissioner Lynn Scott.
Commissioner Kingson.
Mr. Wakeley.
Commissioner Marble, I'm acting as chair tonight. We have quorum five hundred and five. Is there anyone in attendance that needs special assistance to see here or participate in these proceedings tonight? Can you hear me okay in the back? Okay, a little louder. Okay, uh, you're also welcome to come forward if you like. Yeah, but I will speak louder. Yeah, we'll have an opportunity for that just a bit too. Um. Staff, commissioners, are any changes to the agenda tonight?
Um, if I may, um, I spoke to Jeff Bickish, the applicant for file Z C zero zero one four dash two two zone change from Ag Forestry twenty acre to Ag Forestry ten acre. Um, that applicant has agreed to pay fees to postpone the file and is requesting that we postpone the file to a date time certain of September fifteenth, twenty twenty-two at five thirty PM here in, um, US, um, Highway two fifteen hundred, Sandpoint, Idaho.
Okay, I won't argue with that. You can prepare and make a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we go ahead and be in, uh, move that file to September fifteenth. Of the Z C. There we go, zero zero one four dash two two, the zone change.
A second.
I will second that wish selection.
Those of you who say aye.
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 Right, public carries. Agenda has been amended. Minutes from our last meeting called August fourth were made available for the commission to review. Yes.
First, I were you moving home?
I was.
Okay, because I think that some people did come here today for that particular file. And I think we owe them an explanation as to why there wasn't, it wasn't publicized that this, there wasn't, um, when I heard that this was going to be postponed, I was concerned that people would make the drive here and then they would be disappointed because all you, you show up to find out there's nothing happening. So I asked that we post on the public website that the file was withdrawn, but it wasn't actually withdrawn. It was continued. And it, and so that couldn't change our agenda under the rules that we have right now. But we are looking at that. We apologize for your coming here to be disappointed in being able to speak to this. And we're going to look at how we can be better at giving that notice in a more timely way. So please accept my apologies for not being satisfied in that way this evening.
Hey, we speak for that. For that.
It'd be, yep, so that we have proper public hearing on September fifteenth for the zone change. Now. Is that what you're here for? Is that what you came for? Yeah, sorry about that.
People are only notified if they have property at three hundred feet of that property. Basically, that one person, maybe two. And, uh, but we're in an area where we're affected. We live on the same road. And, and so all that, the last couple of days, I've had the day, the day, trucks a day going by our house on a dirt road. And, uh, the dust is still, I mean, I can show you pictures, which else these trucks are creating. And so we're talking about double that.
I can't help you with, um, I can't help you with getting noticed, but I can tell you if you come back on September fifteenth and we'll be able to address these kinds of concerns more directly, but I can't do anything about it. I can't even like.
But will everybody, it's a neighbor that's back with people.
Uh, probably not, but if you'd call the planning department tomorrow or Monday, then they can help you with that.
And I could answer that briefly.
Go ahead.
State law dictates that we must notice within three hundred feet of the property line. And that's where that's derived from. It comes right out of the state law.
I lived next to this property for twenty-five years. Just because the chops it happened, it's fine, it's not a case, you know.
Now, we're all, these, these chopped up too, we're not three hundred feet, they used to be chopped and all of us. We're right next to it.
I hear your concern and if one, if I might.
Yeah.
One thing that I know really, really helps me is if we get written comments, those come to, you can write to us as the commissioners and the planning department, and then we, we all have access to that. And then that is, um, digested and considered prior to showing up. And then I would, and then I would ask you to please also show up. But any of those concerns that you have, if you can submit them in writing, that is really helpful for our board to be able to.
But, but this, this board, we can't do anything about the noticing problem. That's why I say you need to talk to the planning department. I understand the concern, but I can't do anything about it. Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
We'd be happy to hear your concerns at the appropriate time at the next.
Yeah. Also.
Best we can do.
It's accident, basically, that I found this out.
Okay. I can't do anything. It's not my lane. It's not my jurisdiction. It's not my stewardship, unfortunately. But the planning department will be able to help you out during their business hours.
And submitting it in writing is a helpful way for us to look at what people's concerns are and then make plans for the future. Yep.
They'll, yep.
It's okay right on. Sorry for your time. Thank you.
I had a nerve, right? We should tell them about two drinks.
All right. All right, so minutes from our last meeting called August fourth, committed bill for the commission to review. Does any commissioner or staff member care to correct those minutes?
I gotta be honest, I haven't read them. I haven't seen them.
Okay. Does that mean you don't want to correct them?
Yes.
All right.
Correct.
Uh, the minister approved an agenda, file hearing introduction. We have one file tonight. Is a modification of an existing initial use permit. Uh, have you mind putting up the? I've written the agenda for the each file down yet. Well, quickly this time, because we don't have a very big crowd.
You have the hearing rules.
Yes.
Screen. Share my screen here.
Okay. So hearing this one file tonight, staff will present the, uh, application, then the applicant will have a chance to present as well. I'll pepper those people with lots of questions. And, um, then we'll go to public testimony. And, uh, after public testimony, we'll have an opportunity for discussion. You have, can have an opportunity rebuttal to, to share rebuttal about any public testimony that was shared in opposition to the file. And then the, uh, commission will deliberate and choose whether to approve, deny, or continue the, uh, file. Got to take it away.
Conflict of interest.
Sure, if you insist. Does anyone, uh, here on the commission have a conflict of interest or partake communication they'd like to disclose at this time? Fabulous. I don't either.
Very good.
Thank you, Chad, for helping me remember that.
No worries. Uh, so, uh, Chad Chambers, planning staff for the record, we're here tonight to hear file M O D zero 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 two dash twenty-two for residential care facility expansion request. Uh, the property is located off Spirit Lake Cut Off in section eighteen, township fifty-four north, branch four west Boise Meridian. The request is to expand a residential care facility, um, and it's currently serving sixteen residents to forty-eight. Um, the request also contains, and, you know, a proposal to build sixteen cottages, which would be nine hundred square feet in size, as well as expand the current building from about sixty-one hundred feet squared to, um, eleven thousand, three hundred and eighty feet squared. This is a site plan that was submitted at the time the application was received by planning department. So the property is a five acre parcel in the agricultural forestry ten acre zoning district. The comp plan designation for this property is agricultural forestry ten twenty acre. The property is accessed by a private, private driveway, which connects to Spirit Lake Cut Off, which is a county owned and maintained road. I believe it's a mix of asphalt. Uh, services on site for the application include, uh, an individual well, a ten thousand gallon reservoir that's located on site, a private septic system, uh, it's served by the Spirit Lake Fire Protection District. It's powered by a Vista. It's in the West Bonner School District eighty-three. This is just kind of a, a zoning layer kind of showing you where the property is situated, kind of there in Cyan and what's around it. So kind of, you know, just to the north and to the east, we have rural ten acre zoning. So these were the applicable laws that staff used to review the file as well as the comprehensive land use plan, the goals and objectives of that plan. And so, um, in reviewing the modification request, uh, staff did conduct research looking at the original conditional use permit. And then there was a modification as well. So the original condition, conditional use permit was back in two thousand and four. Um, and it was previously determined by staff, and I believe in particular the previous planning director, not the one we had just had, but prior to that, Claire Marley, um, that, uh, the property was eligible for a conditional use permit at that time. So staff does find and concludes that it is eligible for a request to modify that conditional use permit. Uh, at the time in which the application was received, staff determined that it was complete. Um, there have been conditions added to the file to ensure that performance standards for all uses, um, conform for the, for the life of the use. And that is in relation to noise, light, glare, things that might have adverse impacts, potentially adverse impacts on neighboring properties. Um, there is no parking standards in particular for residential care facilities. Um, but staff is recommending that one parking space be made available for each resident receiving care on site. Sign standards, uh, the proposed signage, um, is consistent with the code design standards. Um, there have been conditions of approval added to the file to ensure that there's kind of connectivity, um, parking lot pathways and landscaping, um, as required, as a condition of approval. So looking at the comprehensive land use plan designation, the Ag Forest land use designation, um, recognizes areas where steeper slopes prevail, thirty percent or greater, and transportation is provided by private roads or US Forest Service roads or state roads. Urban services are not available and residential development challenges are present due to slow forest oil conditions, hazard areas, and lack of police supplier services. I just want to highlight a few, um, goals and objectives that really kind of weighed in on staff's determination and, and or recommendation for this file tonight. I'm not going to go over all the goals and objectives. All those details are in the staff report, but I just want to highlight a few. Um, so looking at public services, facilities, and utilities, um, this is right over a comprehensive plan, the implementation component. Um, the goal is that future development shall provide adequate services that should not adversely impact services or utilities of present day users. And then, of course, objectives, um, new development should offset the capital cost of expanding services. Um, the Spirit Lake Fire Protection District, um, has gone through the process of, um, basically adding impact fees for, you know, continued development in the area. That has not been passed and it's not in ordinance yet because it hasn't gone to the board, but that is in process. Um, new development should not, shall not unduly overburden the current system. New development should be adequately served by fire protection, roads, sewer, schools, law enforcement, ambulance, emergency services, water, and other private, public services. Um, public, private services rather. Um, full urban services and provisions for continued operation and maintenance of the systems shall be provided for urban and suburban densities. So in looking at this, um, and looking at the zone district in which this property is situated in and the current use and proposed expansion, um, staff did find that the proposed expansion, um, as drafted in the site plan, um, as a whole, um, is not entirely consistent with the code and looking at the densities. Again, in the rural ten and the AF, AF ten or agricultural forestry ten acre zoning district, that allows for one single family dwelling, basically of any size, an accessory dwelling, and then up to two RVs provided. Um, those are RV, you know, building sites and are lived in for longer durations. Um, so staff is looking at the expansion of the existing building and that's, um, all staff is kind of supporting based on the compatible density around this area. So the community design as well, and this does look at, you know, the rural character and lifestyle of Bonner County. Um, and, uh, you know, one of the objectives is that new development is located in areas with similar densities and compatible uses. Um, and that Bonner County intends for new development to minimize adverse impacts to, on adjacent areas. Uh, Bonner County intends to consider the protection of natural resources and rural features and surrounding uses of the community in the design and location of new development. So again, staff kind of looking at this, found that it wasn't compatible with the surrounding land uses as proposed, um, with the density in the area. Um, you know, the, the property is a five acre parcel in the AF ten zone. Um, and staff does note that, um, when the original conditional use permit was approved, this was actually on a twenty acre parcel that was subdivided down into four fives. And so again, sixteen cabins is, is, uh, is too much for staff to, you know, kind of put a weight behind in support, um. But however, expanding the existing building would minimize impacts to adjacent properties, uses of natural resources because, um, not only looking at the footprint of the building, but also its location, right? It's going to kind of keep it confined to a certain space instead of being closer to neighbors essentially. It is going to admittedly expand the building substantially, but it won't be as many cabins. Um, so staff did route the file to the agencies on screen here and we received a number of comments. Um, and actually I do want to enter a comment from the Spirit Lake Fire Protection District. They have a new fire chief. Her name is Debbie. Um, and I asked her to comment on this. I mean, it's not reflected in the staff report, as we'll see, because it was received today. Uh, but I do want to enter it in the record. So we got a comment from Roden Bridge that said the applicant has recently completed the process of getting a commercial approach, uh, encouragement permit from the Roden Bridge Department. So our concerns have been preemptively satisfied and we have no further comments. This is a really good sign of good faith on the applicant's part and, you know, planning ahead of time. And this is, this is great to see. This is not extremely common with conditional use permits and or modifications. Um, Idaho Transportation Department said they have no comment. Um, we received a pretty lengthy response from the Idaho Department of Environmental Quality, um, that included, you know, things that they wanted addressed, including well site evaluation report, um, preliminary engineering report, um, technical, financial, managerial capacity, um, demonstrating accord with IDAPA. Plans and specifications for drinking water infrastructure to serve the project. Um, the water system and being compliant with a number of people, um, it is proposed to serve. But again, we look back at the original request. It is to, um, account for forty-eight people total from sixteen. So there's, there's a bit of a request there with the expansion. Um, they also are asking for wastewater to be, you know, thoroughly reviewed, um, and, and, and be in accordance with IDAPA as well. And then here we have the Spirit Lake Fire Protection District's comments. Um, and I should note that prior to this hearing, um, Debbie, the fire chief, did, uh, meet with planning staff. And, and I think she was fairly new to, just started her job and I had brought up this file, but we didn't have a comment from her at that time. Um, and, and that's why I kind of insisted that she did respond based on just having a brief conversation about this file with her. Um, and so, you know, looking at the current, you know, it's how many residents are currently there? And then the expansion of that, um, you know, Debbie did indicate here that, you know, there should be an automatic sprinkler system. Um, you know, access, um, to the buildings, um, the road should be compliant with the international fire code standards. Um, it would be difficult to access, if not impossible, um, the additional buildings, the sixteen buildings as proposed. Um, and then she kind of finished with, basically, I feel this is all, I don't have quotes up here, but this is all like directly pasted out of the email somewhere. Basically, I feel that the original building was built at the top end of the residential R four classification to take advantage of the leniency afforded to residential structures as compared to institutional structures. But it's fine when the building was built to code, but the additions being requested changes the buildings to an institutional classification and the code is stricter in that case. And my understanding of this, just kind of looking through comments, is based on the number of residents, um, proposed. Um, and I think, you know, actually, if I go back to that, uh, email, um, from my recollection, um, she did basically say that the entire file should be denied. Um, that was the gist of it that I got at the very end of her email. Um, I did check the file at four forty-seven PM Pacific Standard Time before coming down here. We have no written public comments either for or against the proposal. Um, in review of the code and also the comprehensive land use plan, um, staff is recommending, um, approval only to the expansion of the existing structure subject to conditions. And commissioners, uh, before you, might I have a couple modifications to those conditions that I would ask you to consider in your motion to perhaps amend if you see fit? Um, so conditions, um, B one through B five have stayed relatively the same. I actually need to highlight a portion here. So, sorry about that. Go back. So B one through five have stayed relatively the same as prepared in the staff report. Um, but I wanted to add this part here in B four. Um, after the applicant must obtain and submit a professional wetland delineation, just something in parentheses there could, because in looking at the file, looking at the map layer from, uh, the US Fish and Wildlife Service, it does appear that there are some wetlands on the property, but it looks like there was some evidence in the record to suggest that they had done a wetland delineation previously. So I do want to offer them that opportunity if they have that wetland delineation report to use that uh, for the expansion of the building in order to meet the setback required by code. And then these, these R V conditions would be required prior to the time in which the conditional use permit would be, would be issued if the commission, um, chooses to approve of this file tonight. Um, these A conditions would be basically conditions that would, uh, that the applicant and the landowner would have to maintain for the life of a conditional use permit. Um, and that includes new landowners if the property were, were to be subsequently sold. Um, for A one, I am requesting to modify that or asking you to consider modifying that to, um, basically as amended showing setbacks, wetland, wetlands, parking on site and traffic circulation. And the reason for that is to actually stay consistent with the B condition, which asked them to update the site plan, show these things. A two is pretty standard that the use shall not supersede the, any deed restrictions. A three is for all county setbacks shall be met, very standard for conditional use permits and modification requests. A four is for, um, the conditional use permit essentially to expire if it's not issued within two years. All right, the modification rather of the conditional use permit. Um, A five is, uh, that's going back to those performance standards, which goes to noise, light, glare, any adverse effects to basically neighboring properties, again, for the life of the permit. Um, A six, one parking space and A six, I want to know that this is a staff recommendation here with this condition of approval. Because again, if I hearken back to the parking requirements, um, I couldn't find a specific requirement per se. So this is what I'm recommending. Um, one parking space shall be made available for each resident residing on the property to provide for adequate parking for guests. A seven, the number of residents, care, guests and housing, including private bathroom facilities and staffing on site, provided must comply with all state and federal laws, law, federal laws and regulations. And then A eight, I am asking you to consider adding this, um, and this is again based off of the Spirit Lake Fire Chief's recommendations that they demonstrate compliance with fire suppression prior to new residents occupying that portion of the structure being expanded if approved today by the commission. And that additionally, the final inspection for the building location permit shall not be completed until such fire suppression is installed and deemed compliant by the Spirit Lake Fire Protection District. And what that would do in essence, and my thought process behind this, is if you were to approve this, they were to meet all the B conditions, they could then go ahead and actually fire, file for a building location permit. We would allow them to essentially build and then before we final that and allow them to basically have occupancy, we ensure that those fire suppression things are done and taken care of. So it's just trying to be conscious of the building, limited building season we have and whatnot. That was my thought process behind that. Um, I've talked a lot. At this time, I can take any questions.
I just have one question, I'll just question, comment on the, uh, civil, civil party letter uh, regarding the form of sixteen residents. I imagine that's per structure, sixteen per structure would require the sprinkler suppression system?
Not from how I read and interpreted, interpreted, um, the letter. I think that in particular was talking about, um, the use basically being more intense. So once we're past sixteen residents, then we're considered, um, an institutional assisted living facility, in which case additional fire suppression methods, um, should be employed in the case of an event of a fire. That was my interpretation of how that was written.
So, uh, Commissioner Lynn Scott, what I'm reading here says it's the, uh, living facilities, sixteen full-time residents. What's the, the overall facility makes sense?
And one other thing I think I should add, um, is I actually don't know with that expansion, how many additional residents that would basically account for. Um, and I would ask the commission to consider having that discussion with the applicants and/or their project representatives to determine a maximum number of residents on site too, because it's certainly probably not going to be forty-eight. If this is, if this is how you decide to approve of this tonight.
All right. Any more questions from chat or if you can move on to the applicant?
Okay, I have another question.
Okay.
Travis.
We'll be in thirteen.
Where's it going?
You know, bringing a chop.
Okay.
Oh.
Oh, you pay attention.
Ground over. Subtitles.
Formalities out of the way. Travis Howler with my professional answer. There's, uh, three oh three Church Street here at Sandpoint. Uh, the applicant representative, uh, at the record show, um, uh, the applicant, uh, the owners of the property are here to answer any questions that I can or expand on anything. So, uh, thank you to Chad. Uh, thank you to the planning department as always, um, thorough and, and beautifully done. Um, so, uh, we're here to ask about the expansion of the assisted, uh, Alpine, uh, living facility, Aspen Springs, excuse me, uh, assisted living. Um, this is kind of where we're at. Um. Highway forty-one, Spirit Lake, uh, Lantern Lake, and then Blackstone coming off, and you have Spirit Lake Cut Off. Um. I'll, I'll always show a vicinity, so we know what we're talking about, where in the county, county very large. But th- this location is actually key. Um, so just keep that in the back of your head. Uh, most assisted living facilities are in cities, Spokane, Sandpoint, Coeur d'Alene. So, um, we're proposing two phases here. Um, so the first one being phase one, uh, the building expansion. And so that's on both sides of the current building. Um, and so, uh, to answer some questions about fire, uh, that was a new one on me. Just hearing about it is just now. Um, so the building is currently, uh, installed with automated fire sprinkler system. So that is already done. The expansion will also have, uh, the, the expansion of, uh, uh, this automated sprinkler system to meet those requirements, the I F C and, um, anything Spirit Lake, uh, uh, fire chief, uh, Debbie would like. Um, so, and then, uh, we're, we're proposing the three, uh, excuse me, sixteen cabins, eight on each side uh, as a phase two, so, uh, about three or five years from now. Uh, the reason we put that in now is because we don't want to come back in three to five years. Um, but I think we could, we can get around all this. So, um, we're proposing two phases. And so, um, like Chad said, you know, this review is a modification of an already approved C U.
And so like Chad said, you know, this review is a modification of an already approved C U P. So the granting is mainly saying, does, are, do we need the title twelve? Do we need the comprehensive plan use? And obviously we take into account the outside agencies, the specialists in their field, right? So. I won't bore you to death, but just going through the title twelve in our county code. The performance standards, parking standards, science standards, design standards, landscape, creating, creating stormwater and wetlands. Reason it's conditional use permits because we've put in these conditions of approval. So that we do comply with these design standards. Each one of those. Are either met or have a condition of approval, therefore will be met. I won't bore you with all that. You guys have that in your staff report. For the review against the comprehensive plan. There's all of them, property rights, all the way down to community design, the ones underlying on the ones Chad spoke to. And you can see the natural resources there at section two point six. That's because the wetlands on site, two point eight, public services, the density in the services. Or onsite were brought into question and then for the community design, the surrounding land, land use densities. And the natural resources. So let's go into those and let me tell you what I see from a planner. Representing the owners. So for natural resources and brought it because of wetlands on site, so staff said the expansion of the facility with the addition of the cabins doesn't. Not be the, does not suit the property in general. As it's drawn right now, that is correct. You're not meeting the setbacks to the current wetlands. Expanding the existing building is supported though, provided the wetland setbacks can be met. And so, condition of approval. If wetland setbacks cannot be established, the wetland delineation will be submitted in accordance with, with county code. So, meaning the building can, can meet those, but the cabin can't, or so we think. The public services facility staff again, the proposed expansion is not compatible with the surrounding densities and it lacks urban services. The surrounding densities, this is a tough one only because we are in the ag forest. And surrounded with some rural stuff, but where the densities are for. The ag forest and the rural setting, we're a, we're a assisted living facility. Obviously, we're going to have more units, you know, on the property, so. I'll hit on to that, but again, we put in these conditions of approval so that we have the applicants meet that condition. And there's, so condition B five. Address the concerns, but Idaho Department of Environmental Quality Provider Letter indicating the services have been increased. And approved to meet their standards, therefore we meet the urban services. And if you do read in the staff report, the I D E Q does talk about. This increase will bring up the drinking water to a public drinking water system, meaning we will have to meet those standards. That's an urban service as well as the wastewater. The discharge flows will be high enough that we will now be at a larger capacity. Again, I believe Ph D will outsource that to D D Q to take care of that. So with the conditions put in place, these will be met. Again. Also for the cabins, if those are approved, phase two. Community designs, surrounding land use densities and natural resources, staff said it's not compatible with surrounding land uses. And densities in the area, again, we go back to, this is an assisted living facility, this isn't a residential. As we normally think about it. The land use, there is no land use in our code for assisted living. So it's that, that's why this is a little bit more difficult. Expanding only the existing building, Seth was going to say, expanding the only building will minimize the impacts to adjacent properties. Use of the natural resources. The impacts to the adjacent properties, I would have expected that the neighboring property, the one residence would have made a comment. They did not. The property to the west is vacant, to the north, there. There is somebody there, but it's very far away and, and then we've ordered Spirit Lake Cut Off Road right there. The densities, I will hit on that real quick, but again. This is many units, the natural resources, well, we go back up, natural resources are the wetlands. Again, the condition of approval, those all will be met. So. Why can't all the conditions of approval that are put in place can't be put on to the cabins as well? Right? So if we're saying, hey, the building's going to have to meet this, but we're not going to allow the cabins. Well, cabins are brought in and with me in them, should still comply, right? I guess the, the question is, why can't these conditions be put on to the cabins as well? The density. So, this is straight out of Bonner County Code for the Ag Forest District, which mirrors of A F ten and. Maximum lot coverage fourteen, again, this, you don't have a land use, so we, we have to try to take your best guess, right? Chad did a great job. I'm going to propose a new one. Maximum lot coverage fourteen, sub chap or. Sub note, whatever, fourteen, for illegal not conforming lots or parcels less than one acre. So because we're a five acre and a ten acre minimum, that makes us a legal not conforming lot. The maximum lot coverage shall be thirty five percent. Apparently we're at two point eight. That's what the current sixty one hundred square foot building on site. We're proposing to add the expansions to bring it up to around eleven thousand and then sixteen nine hundred square foot. Add it all together, divided by five acres. We're proposing to go to eleven point eight percent. That's with the expansion and the sixteen cabins. So by that definition in the county code, that's met with density. Outside due to some comments, again, road and bridge, they're satisfied, I, I T E, no comment, D E Q. I won't bore you with that and reiterate it, but again, that's why we have these conditions of approval, so we will need it. Stress the concerns. Again, the Ph D, Ph D did talk about the increase in the wastewater flows. Again, D E Q will take care of that. Again, the condition of approval, we put these in place. So I ask again, why can't all these conditions of approval be applied to the cabins as well? So I, I told you to, you know, keep that in mind where we were, these assisted living. Are, are in high demand. We have people on a waitlist. And we're in an awesome area that is not like everybody else's, right? We're not in Sandpoint where the other ones are. We have Luther Park, Sandpoint, Sandpoint, it's just a little, Alkaberry, Hurstown. And we don't, on the other side, just on the Washington side and then outside the, outside of the county. Giving swords in cutney there, so. We're proposing to go from sixteen beds to forty eight. You can see a few of the other beds that with the park, life care. And Huckleberry have. So, I would like to make a recommendation to modify two conditions of approval. A six says one parking space for, for one resident. I would like to change that to one parking space for two beds. How'd I come up with that? Not just because I wanted to decrease it by half, that is actually the city of Sandpoint's code. It comes straight over there. The applicant and the dress all concerned by Idaho, I D E Q, so those are the services we talked about. I would like to add to that, that. And for some reason, we can't meet that demand, the property doesn't allow, the soilers don't allow it. We would like to increase to what we can get, what standard we can meet. So if the services cannot be increased to meet the additional requirements, the maximum allowable units will be decreased to the maximum number of units allowed. As set forth in the standards of the approved drinking water and wastewater system on site, meaning that whatever we can get approved for, we will get. An updated site plan shall be given to the planning department, already they're requesting one, but if this does get modified to reflect the change. To reflect the decrease in allowable units if needed in the site plan entered into the files record to supersede the current site plan. So. We don't want to have to come back. I understand if you just want to approve the expansion of the building. The cabins are definitely at phase two. But if the cabins can't meet the wetland setbacks, we can't have cabins, right? So I understand that, but again, all the conditions of approval will still need to be met with the building and with the cabins. So I'd like to make the recommendation that we include the cabins, the phase one, phase two for this project. I'll take any questions or comments you have.
Okay, so you have a question in regards to why can't condition, these conditions be put on the cabins and why are the cabins being gonna? Tossed out of there. The issue would be the. The amount of dwelling units on one piece, so you know, like what the county is looking at. Is you have your main house, every A D U and then possibly two R Vs, so maybe four structures at most for living units. I look at your plan, if you, if you can pull up the, the site plan that's drawn for this with the sixteen cabin. At first I thought those, that was maybe like a roadway, but these are walkways in and out of these cabins. So the easy solution for you is going to be having this a covered walkway where the roof extends from that building. And touches each one of those cabins. This is the solution and it should be there because somebody's been shoveling or trying to get old people in and out of. These assisted carry list. But that would be one way that you could probably have a condition put on this where you could get your cabins approved. But that's just a thought. And then I just don't see the county approving like sixteen additional. Units on a piece of property.
Well, that's the thing, right? There's no land use, a sawmill, we had a one with regarding a sawmill, you know, and there, there's conditions put in place with that. The, the thing with the, the assisted living is there is no, there, there is no. Code that says I can only have four structures total, I can only have.
That's why most of these would be like in a commercial space or something like that.
Right, right. And so we can think of it as a, as a resort, you know, or, or. Elkins, you know, and so something like that where, you know, you have people staying in them. Obviously they're staying in them long, longer than two weeks. That's kind of a stipulation that is out there. If we were to do the covered things, then all of a sudden everything, all the E's now are part of that thirty five percent. And I don't know if we would be able to meet that. Oh, yeah, right. So, but I like the idea. I would like to. I would like to pose the question. If there are properties on site regardless of the use. But have structures like this, Elkins Bay Resort, you know, tight knit facility. I'm thinking of Garfield Bay, you know, tight knit, things like that. Give me a reason why, I, I still, to me, this is okay, the structures. Is it, is it an appearance thing? Because nobody's really looking at it. Is it a, just a, just a numbers thing?
Density, it's a zoning. Not zone.
Well, there's.
Not a recreational there.
No, I understand that, but that's, it's, it's. There is no zone for. I know permitted use, right? There's no use for this, therefore it's permitted in any zone. So, so to say, I get what you're getting at, so. What if the lot itself was twenty acres? But yeah, this still is the configuration. Is this, is it being on five acres the problem? I guess I'm not. Yes.
So it's the density, you know, it goes back to the density, I think is what the issue is from the.
Right.
Planning department.
And the density is a calculation of how many units per acre, right? And so.
Not just units per acre, but the underlying zoning for that, you know, like if that was, if that five acre piece was five lots, five one acre lots. I think you could have more of an argument for having separate structures.
But the, but the, so density by definition is units per square foot or acre or whatnot. So, is, so I go back to here and just want to talk about the density, this isn't a residential, right? This isn't thrown to the person, it is commercial, right? Let's say we did have.
If your underlying zoning was commercial, then you wouldn't have the situation.
Correct.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
So maybe you need to look for a some change.
No, but that's why we're here, right? Right? Because are you going to want to rezone a five acre parcel to commercial? And again, this goes back to the fact of where we are.
If you want to do that plan, I think that would probably be the proper way to do it. Unless you want to build a roof and attach it to all the properties.
I think that we, we looked at explicitly allowed. Building types or, or standards in its own, we would probably find. Lighter densities, like for example, two RV spots and an A D U, that's, that's four total structures in buildings where people sleep. Let's say, we're there for twenty four hours to eat good water, then you're going to get out in the fire because they, they sleep there, the kids are right there. So to me, that's, that's an argument against you, just, just thinking about the question you posed earlier. Or, or more density than anything that I can think of. And those are explicit uses, of course, like you said, this isn't really covered by the code very well.
I have one more question. Is Spirit Lake Cut Off not considered a main thoroughfare where you could have a commercial space? I thought it was.
With this. The, the problem I see, just right off the top of my head, is that all of a sudden now you're asking for a commercial space in the middle of a, at, you know, ag forest. Right next to.
But commercial zoning makes sense for this piece more than ag forest, correct?
Right, or you, or even rural service center?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. But then all of a sudden, then, then, then we start talking, you know, higher densities, which we're, we're talking about. Yeah, yeah, and so, so. Yeah.
So, in the, in this conditional use plan, it is specific to. Assisted living, it couldn't be, it, it's people, the people that are living here are living here because they have the need. Of twenty four seven. Care potentially and, and there are, there. The, the conditional use permit couldn't be changed so that all of a sudden this would be forty eight soccer players. Or, you know, it's, it's specific to assisted living, correct?
Yeah, the use has to be to the intent.
To the intent.
Yeah, otherwise I believe we could get, yeah, a nasty letter from the county.
Right, okay.
Mister Chairman.
Yes, sir.
That's our director, Mr. Jesus Sam.
Hey, good evening, Commissioner. Sorry to jump in here. Just to kind of go over this on use, right? The twelve dash three, three, three does specific use of air treat and daycare as child slash adult. And that's what we determined was the use of for this specific file, okay? So there's also provision in the, if there's not a specific use, the, any direct make the. In, in the use tables where the use fits best and what standards to. To judge it if you want to call it. So that being said, the idea of density and the number of units, there's no standard specifically spelled out by code that specifies. The total number of units per this type of use. So the conditional use permit process can add conditions to limit the number of. Of the specific file. So the conditional use permit process, I think is, is the right. Zoning does allow this additionally to be. But I think, you know, based on staff's review, we are requesting a limited number, you know, based on our, on our review, so. Any questions?
How could this not get categorized as convalescent center? At the commercial use table, you referenced twelve, three, three, three.
No, we had a long debate as planned, Chris, and we took it through. Through some date code, some dated. Living facilities and we determined the best fit for this, it's like an adult. Living facilities, and we determined the best fit for this, it's like an adult daycare. I think that's where we we pulled it through the commission. I don't have a hand right now. I'm not sure if Chad remembers.
Yeah, the way, I I think it's how you define the difference between the two.
Yeah.
Um, if I recall, and and I'm pulling up the code now on my phone here. Uh just share with me. I think I did try to look at the definition and we felt that it didn't align with that. Um, my understanding of that kind of care, that's more of a short order duration.
Yep.
Um where health is kind of in rapid decline. And this, the way I, in my review of this previous conditional use permit. Was kind of a longer term care facility. And so that kind of differentiation between the two is kind of how staff was able to make that determination.
Okay.
Uh again, it was debated quite a bit for kind of that conclusion. Uh but this was permitted before and it is a conditional use permit that is active and it is valid, so.
Um, if I may, um. After speaking with the owners, um, if it's the cabins that that are the problem, the phase two. Um, for this for this modification, uh we'd be willing to take those off. And uh meet all the other conditions, if that's um, that appeases.
I'd like to satisfy one curiosity before we propose that. Um Jake, if you're still there. Isn't it true that if you get a conditional use, if you if you're given uh the conditional use permit is approved. But then not implemented, it expires after two years? Is that not true?
Yeah, it's typically in the. Well, it's probably one of the first three.
Okay, so this would need to be. Specially handled if it wanted to be, if if the applicant wanted its last words three to five years before they even got to phase two, fair?
Well, it's it's for the use, it's it's not for every structure. So if they have a and and they the use. Um, so think of it like the um we uh the Bible camp. Like where they had this long term, all these different structures they were gonna use. It's not necessarily that two years expires and they can't build. It's the use has to start with two years. This is currently already the use, so I don't. Play specifically unless turn it into just a typical resident.
All right, thanks.
Mm-hmm.
Also, I have a question. Commissioner Wiggly, um um, the original condition use permit uh was for this. Project on twenty acres. And how did it um? Remain to be a valid condition of use permit when it got reduced to five acres? Oh, that's a question for Jake.
Yeah, yeah, I think timing. Checkmate. Yeah, the the use runs with the land.
Yeah, so is the other fifteen acres still available for that use?
That's a really good question, and I actually think that we could actually kind of clean that up tonight. Um depend how the commission votes, but but basically prior to two thousand nine, when the last zoning ordinance was adopted in November eighteen thousand nine, I believe is the date. Um parcels that parcels and lots that were subdivided below the lot size minimum. That basically kind of carried over. And so if it was subdivided prior to that magical date. Um, as I see it written in the code, it's essentially leaving dockers from the property. And so the use that's carried over. And that's specifically, this property is specifically where that structure is located and where this residential care facility is situated. Um so I'd actually argue that the remaining fifteen acres um is no longer part of that, based on how the land is laid out today, but I think we could clear that up. Um, tonight, there's a condition of approval or something that acknowledges it or in your findings of fact, Mr. Niss.
The use is terminated on those other lots then.
I I have a question for Chad, you know, if I may. You know, like we're talking about dances. I just, you know, say you have a primary residence, you mean, how many? What would what would they have to wait when they go ahead and just go ahead and build three cabins in addition to that? They only have to modify the scene to do that, if I correct.
They they would, because because the conditional use permit locks down the site plan. So they would have to modify. Um, and if that's what your discretion decides, you can't, you have that latitude. That's what your task to do. And that's actually why we didn't take this to the hearing examiner. We wanted, you know, uh four of you, or five of you, sorry. To kind of look look at this.
Yeah, so Chad and I were talking about that, yeah, and I actually completely agree with them. Um, as uh.
The representative, um, we would like to take off the phase two, the cabins, and come back at a later date to propose that. So I'd like to uh propose just the phase one, the extension of the building. Uh so the owners can go ahead and uh move forward with the voting location permit. And that would trigger the services that we talked about with PhD, DEQ and stuff. So that um the 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 building window is rapidly closing this year. And so um maybe like to do sort of that.
Well, why I can I ask a question? Why are you backing up? Before, is it some, I mean, person, I haven't spoken yet, but personally. I'm not against the density for this particular use. I remember recently we've had. I wasn't involved in the a triangle piece of property that had a. RV park on it that was gonna basically be a man who was basically a mobile home park. And I don't remember having much debate over density.
You could have.
I think the the difference is the the code specifically calls out density.
Yes, but what one thing that we're talking about here is that we don't specifically have a code for this type of use.
No, but what does get approved and what you will approve is the site plan. And if the site plan does have the cabins on it. Then we will have to, all of a sudden, the cabins will have to meet those requirements as well, like I was going for.
Right.
But. It's a lot harder to fit in sixteen cabins around wetlands and services and stuff. Than it is because the top priority for my client is to expand the current building. And that can be done um and we can meet all those expectations. And so that's that's priority one. So um uh, yes.
And then you'll know after talking with the EQ, what your sewer is gonna allow you per cabin. So instead of sixteen, maybe it's twelve.
Yep.
Maybe it's twenty.
Yep.
Uh could you, um, just out of curiosity, is that five acres there that you have on this like, is that the entire?
Uh to scale is very close, yes.
Wh- where are the wetlands?
Wetlands are down here.
By the road, oh, the road over there.
Yeah.
The road.
I think that's safety area, pardon it, Commissioner Wiggly. Um, to be honest with you, that was an oversight on my part. Uh, they're just south of the existing structure. So there's a creek, the ponds and the.
Yeah, the ponds right there.
Yeah, then the boats on the south.
Yeah, kind of right around in here.
Yep.
So it'd be feasible maybe just swing those, both that group cabin.
Absolutely.
Away from the west.
Right. I I think personally, I find this to be an innovative way to meet a need. That we have described in our comprehensive plan. Uh so we have a, we have a wide range of residents in our county that have a wide range of needs. And then we, you've shown very effectively that we take all of the people who might have lived rurally their whole lives, and now that they need assistance. We shove them in town, inside, in a commercial space. We don't care what your living situation is like anymore. You're gonna have to live next to a parking lot because you live next to each other. These are people that, you know, in my mind, when I'm thinking, are not. They're not out there shooting their guns and.
You're absolutely.
Running their dogs all over and, you know, riding their motorbikes up and down the road.
Yeah.
So there, the the impact on the neighborhood. In my mind would be different. We don't have this particular thing in our code like we do for a mobile home park. But we might wanna think about advancing that. If you wanna back up, I'll let you back up, but I do wanna say that I think that it's. Um, you know, it's important to fit it on the lot with the uh modifications that you were talking about, so. You have proper water, proper septic, proper fire lanes. Um, I thought that your idea about the appropriate parking based on the city of Sandpoints rules. Made sense because again, probably most of these people aren't actually driving themselves. Very much, or they might not be in assisted living. So we don't need a two-car attached garage on every nine hundred square feet. It's a, it's a unique living situation, and that's why I asked if the conditional use permits. You know, kind of holds that use, or if it could be in a subsequent landowner, all of a sudden, they're turning it into a. A drastically different use that would have more impact on the rural neighborhood. That's my two cents on.
Maybe in deliberation, we can kind of take the two issues separately and see what comes up with, to take the two phases.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Oh, any more questions? I, oh, you're the applicant. You're welcome to come up right now and continue uh doing what you're doing. If you wouldn't mind just say your name to the microphone.
Uh Troy Davis, President of Still Metal Investments. The the idea behind the uh. Individual little cottages and and nine hundred is probably bigger than what there would really be, or closer to seven hundred is probably to be. But we did a development in Westminster, Colorado, San Marina Retirement Community, two hundred and thirty-eight units. We had approximately thirty detached little units. The demand for those was off the charts. We had like a two to three year waiting list because, you know, as we all are getting older. We are reluctant to give up our independence, you know, and at some point, they have to move into the main facility, which has all the amenities in it. And the dining, the facility cooking, but they still want that independence as long as they can hold on to it. So. Our thought is, is we're in a beautiful country setting and like like the lady here said, you know, so many people. They're country people. They don't wanna be in the middle of town. They wanna be out here where they can see the deer and the elk running around there. Um, and the 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 thought was have that independent little unit that they can get a lot away by themselves. Yet they can come down the walkway and they come in and have their dining with the rest of the neighbors, but they can, they can get their own independence and and it gives them a little bit more. And again. Our one in Westminster, the 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 demand for those separate units that we had was just like off the chart. It was, and that and that's what was the the idea behind this. We thought it would be great to be able to uh satisfy both. People's needs, you know, those that wanna be more dependent, but the ones that need the more care, they'd go in the main facility.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. We have more questions for the applicant, the representative, Mr. Niss. I cheat here. Move to a. Public. Public testimony. Now, I've got two, three, four, five, six, seven names on here. And so uh if your president just raised your hand, and I'll decide whether you're allowed to talk now. Troy Davis, you spoke. Josh Parker. Did you wanna speak tonight? Uh Travis Haller, you don't have to sign any Travis. Uh. Jeremy Blakely, Jerry Blakely, Cindy Rep, Gerald Rep, and Heather Blakely. Yes. Okay, so we will forego. Do you wanna speak tonight? Okay, that's everybody. Uh do we have anybody online that raised their hand or? Have a good time talking about this, great. And we'll throw the public testimony portion of this meeting. Uh, we'll go ahead and forego. We're prepared to discuss before we, great.
Right, well, a few things, Charlie.
Oh, yeah, I'm not sure about that.
So I, first of all, I wanna acknowledge what Christina or Commissioner Kingsland had said. About the need for housing and affordable housing and care in Bonner County. Um, you know, while I am sympathetic to that, I do have to look at agency comments and. Um, one of the, one of the problems that I had with the site plan, um. And also one of the problems that the fire chief or Spirit Lake Fire had with it was access and getting vehicles in and out. Um, and that's why that condition um that I added. Uh it's designed to in part address that, because if you look at this. I do have a problem with the traffic circulation, right? Where is the fire truck gonna get in and out? What's that, what's that gonna look like? Um, and the way in which this is written, you know, the additional buildings would be difficult, if not impossible. The access with fire vehicles greatly increases the chance of resident death. And fires spread to adjacent buildings, they are fairly close to each other too. Um, one of the things we hear when we meet with fire departments, we've met with the West Pond Ray Fire District, for example, is. You know, structures being close to each other, trees, vegetation, things of that nature can cause for fires to spread faster. Um, so I think the site plan at absolute minimum needs to be addressed. Um. If the commission also um decides to um approve of the request. Um, with perhaps changes that the project representative uh Travis has proposed. Um, I would just ask if you're going to deviate from the forty-eight residents and we're just gonna approve phase one. That we come to a clear determination on how many residents can be allowed. So that we're maintaining safety here and that that condition is put in the file, put in the record. Um. Lastly, um, and this is just food for thought, um, if you wanna consider visitation hours as part of a condition as well. Um, and at that, I I don't have anything else to add.
Chad, when I reread that email from Debbie, I found two. She basically made two big points. One was the automatic sprinklers, the other was fire access roads that provide access to within a hundred fifty feet of all sides of all buildings. Sounds like automatic sprinklers might be already fixed or more satisfied. And a fire access road. Around the buildings would satisfy the other concern.
So, yep, to some extent. Um, I still think that condition, if you decide to approve the proposal. Um, as written, that you do require them to ensure that all the new structures meet that standard, because what we're saying is today they do. But, you know, that's a way to ensure that future structures meet that as well.
Yep, I like the way they amended the uh condition. I just wanted to see if we differ on our interpretation of this letter.
Yeah, I do think perhaps the structures being, they do, again, appear to be fairly close to each other. Um, so I do think that that should be a consideration to.
Yeah, if the party, if we we have the condition that the party can design a letter, then I'm not really worth anything.
Okay.
Cool, thank you, Chad.
Yep, thank you.
Right, wish yours, let us deliberate.
So we could have it amended to uh. It's obviously gonna be sixteen more people inside the building and then sixteen people on the outside. So I think there's thirty-two for phase one. If I'm understanding right, we probably could ask them. It's gonna be thirty-two people, I imagine, in the main building.
Okay.
And then one person per auxiliary unit, so sixteen more, so that's their forty-eight, right?
I was doing it the other way around, I was putting two people on each ADU and so.
Okay.
So it's asking them if we can.
Okay, uh, the the. Chair unanimously opens this up to public hearing and um, ask the question of the applicant real quick. Are we talking about two residents per per individual unit or one resident per individual unit, those seven hundred unit structure units?
What has our expansion, the sixteen are gonna be single rooms, private rooms. The current building had eight rooms that were double occupancy, so that's where the sixteen comes in. But we have two of those rooms, we have taken part of it to add common facilities like paint barn. So there's six rooms in the current facility that can have double occupancy, two that will be single occupancy. So. Total maximum really would be thirty occupants with the expansion of the building.
Okay.
Then if we do the cabins, we have sixteen more additional.
Got it.
Huge at some place.
So thirty in the building.
Got it.
Fourteen six total.
So forty-six total with you.
It's, and sometimes people might wanna move to a cabin together. I mean, uh. You know, there's a, there's a lot of variations in the way families might have needs. I don't think it would be appropriate to say you can only have single occupancy. Cabins, as long as there's rules that, you know, like a total number of people. Something like that seems appropriate.
We'll get closer. Are we, are we talking about forty-six um? Rented paying occupants, clients.
Same beds.
Beds.
Yeah, that was.
Are there not staff that are available twenty-four hours a day or is staff at home at night?
Staff rotates, but they don't sleep on the premises.
Okay.
And.
Wanna go back to the. We have.
Do you have anybody else have any other questions?
All right, care closes the jury, call the president.
Okay, so it's thirty if we just to pay a one oh group phase one. Thirty, forty-six, you know, total beds.
Yeah.
And I would say like, I'm okay with looking at like Chris said, you know. Forty-six uh with the with the revised site plan that meets the qualifications for. Silver Lake or Spirit Lake, Fire Chiefs, whatever, DEQ.
Yeah.
And all those other concerns.
Yeah.
Yeah, because even if we, even if we zone.
Yeah, because even if we, even if we zone, approve all those cabins, it's going to kick it because there's going to be more than twenty-five. Just going to kick that, those uh.
Yeah.
The D E Q.
And they're aware of that.
Yeah.
So that's kind of what he was asking for, an up and downside, you know, like if they can get more or whatever, if it's less, then it's less. But maybe that number is contingent upon what's approved by D E Q and the fire departments. But I will, you know, that may not be a great way to go, but I don't know. Kind of. Put that down to Jacob or somebody else in my, there were a little more than.
Yeah, the commission could say, could, if you decide to do that, you could say up to.
Okay.
That number, right, provided.
You know, approval from D E Q.
List all those.
Yes, stuff like that.
Right.
That way they come to where they can get what they need and then help it come back.
Firewater.
So. So staff recommended, Chad recommended that um condition A one be amended to say that the site signs to show setbacks, wetlands, parking, traffic circulation. And A eight would require a letter from the fire chief. Basically a letter of approval. I think those would work together to satisfy the needs of the fire chief in the letter. And then condition B four was recommended by staff that say, or except a previous delineation report if one isn't. If, if, if one exists, um, I might add to that. Or show that you, you know, get a, a wetland fill permit, which is just part of the regular building location permitting process. If we're going to call out a delineation, then we should also call out for a fill permit to, to, to conform with Bonner County's building standards. So that's one thing that I would, that I would amend to the um.
Jacob, one question I have is if this approving all of it as one uh hamper's an applicant in any way for a B L P for phase one? Um, or are they going to have been hung up with D E Q and the fire department? Because of phase two tied to phase one, or should we look at two site plans? I don't know. This is just a question that maybe somebody else smarter than me can answer, but I think they had some apprehension about having it all on this approval. Because it's going to end up making it to where they can't get their B L P this year or, or right now for the main, the main.
Oh.
I think they might want to come back for another meeting. So I'm thinking that's what I read.
But when they after this go to get the building location permit to, to do phase one and then go through all the agency review and requirements and infrastructure spread for phase one. And then under the same permit, come back a couple of years later, get building location permits for the sixteen units and then trigger other events later.
Right.
I think one permit is.
Yes, you're right. People are smart.
Again, I'm just going to cover the mic so.
He has his director position, doesn't he, going to fill itself, man?
So I, you could, you could do that.
Okay.
Um, I would just say in your conditions to make it explicitly clear, phase one, you know, all these conditions must be that met. And then prior to phase two, all these conditions must be met. Just make it clear in your conditions and maybe um. Or you could modify that is. And this is a little out of the ordinary for me to suggest this, but have, I guess with the site plan A one condition, have them label phase one and then label phase two. Very explicitly on the site plan and maybe just amend that A one condition so that it's clear.
And that A one, do we want to say is limited to thirty beds? And then A two is forty-six.
Yes, you would want to specify that, absolutely.
And I agree absolutely with filling, allowing fulfill.
And Chad, what do you think about the extra conditions that, that said if we can't, if we can't fully um fulfill phase two. Is this permit would qualify for reducing phase two to the point where we do need.
That's what I.
Was that adding in that verbiage?
That's what I got stuck on actually with, with allowing for the approval of all the cabins is because the approved site plan is the approved site plan. And that's where I kind of got stuck, to be totally honest.
Right.
Um, I, I, I'm not looking to just recommend denial on things, but that's where I really got stuck.
Right. So it's, so what you're saying is it's really hard to add what Travis said to add in. Because once we approve a site plan, the site plan is approved, even if D E Q comes back and says we can't do this, that, or the other.
Correct, but it is your latitude and you as commissioners can decide what you wish to approve and based on what conditions you see fit. Um, I, I gave you staff's perspective, but if you decided perhaps half of this, maybe eight instead of sixteen, whatever you decide, you have that latitude.
Well, I like the latitude of letting D E Q, Spirit Lake Fire, set that condition.
Yeah, sixteen cabins.
Yeah. I understand the catch twenty-two, you can't get there from here, problem.
Yep, that language would just have to be explicitly clear in your motion up to.
Right.
Turn it down.
Travis wrote it down.
Are you talking about B five here?
We are talking about, I think it was the, when, where did you add that language in? B five, thank you.
Yeah, we must address all concerned by the Idaho Department of Environmental Quality and provide a letter indicating that drinking water and waste water meets their standards.
I think I'm filtering it up again.
Okay.
For up to sixteen cabins or.
For, for, for forty-six residents, for no more than forty-six residents.
We're guys, yeah.
Right back.
Cannot be increased to meet the additional requirements. The maximum allowable units will be decreased to the maximum number of units allowed as set forth in the standards of approval of drinking water, waste water. We system on our site. And, and then I want to add. Uh, and. Fire points. This is, Chris, we have to come up with all the.
Yeah. The, the fire one was on this.
It's a A eight.
Eight. Okay, so this is just, yeah.
So you're gonna have, yeah, so in the motion, I have, so as amended with the following. Two additions, A six.
Right. So leave it there so we can see.
I don't see.
Well, this is, these are the, these are the amendments that the applicants proposed. Staff proposed three different amendments, but they are not all touching, they're, they're touching a different, different sets of amendments. So A one, site plan to show a bunch of setbacks, wetland parking, traffic circulation. A eight, letter from the fleet fire chief is required. And then. A, B five, maximum beds to be reduced by D E Q, drinking, waste fire capacity. Do we just want to add to this something about up to forty-six residents or we can just let the permit say forty-six residents and that should be, you know? Or, or maybe we just.
Maximum.
It's up to.
It's the language here I think is satisfied, satisfies mining. Adjusted to whatever is.
Up to or not to exceed.
Yeah.
Something that just holds.
Maximal image decrease the maximum, it says it right there in the first sentence of the um smaller text interview.
Yeah, but we don't, we don't want to have D Q determine more than what we want to let them.
Well, they wouldn't be able to do that because elsewhere in the application, else when the permit, it would say forty-six residents.
Right, so that would be the max, so that's, that's what we would be.
Right.
Now, would be the maximum of the forty-six.
Beds.
Beds. Sixteen potential cabins, up to sixteen cabins, should they meet. All of these standards. Yeah, I mean, I, I want to say that in theory, I like that idea. Chad, I'm impressed with the, the reservations that you had on this. I share those. I just am trying to find a way to take both a good vision and these concerns that you have. Put them together. How are you feeling that way?
Oh, yeah, definitely.
The, the need, the need for this service is. I think it's top parallel, but it has to meet conditions that, otherwise not opening up the can.
I like B five as stated, a, as, as proposed on the board right now.
Okay.
What words would be changed to that? To satisfy anybody else's concern.
I think your motion could address this. How you, how you make your motion, how you amend the motion, if you, if you motion to approve. I think your motion to approve could specify the up to, because this condition would limit, right? But your motion, I think your motion could take care of that or not to exceed, right? X amount of cabins, X amount of people.
Okay. Okay. Great. So we'll just say in the motion.
That, are you having a discomfort level with the density or?
I like that and I think A six we. I agree with that.
Back to B four, which is the delineation question, just dropping four. It's one of these, you have to follow the law laws. And if we just drop it, then they can get the fill permit, they can get the delineation, or they can use an existing delineation and just be pragmatic about the B L P. This is all going to be triggered by the B L P. So I'd like to leave B four as is and not take staff's recommendation on B, I'd like to drop B four. Rather than take staff's, staff's recommendation for B four.
So when we make that motion, we're strong.
Just because, because that's already spoken to, that when we go to get a B L P, we have to meet our setbacks, so.
And, and there's a variety of ways to make those setbacks and so why, why hamper, why, why?
Don't take some of that off.
Delaborate on now.
Commissioner Marlowe, Travis, I would, for the record, um, it's to be my rebuttal.
Sure.
I just want to make clear, uh, I love uh Commissioner Webster's idea of the conditions for phase one met. Do not, do not interrupt, you know, the phase two.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's.
If you think that that's something that we need to speak to, or you can put that on your site plan, so that it would.
We'll need it. Chad said, yeah, there's one phase two.
Okay, and that's in A one.
Yep, A one is going to be thirty beds. A two is the.
Shall be, the news shall be developed and shall be operating in order to be approved site plan showing phase one thirty beds. And phase two up to an additional or up.
Forty-six.
Up to forty-six.
Next, or max total forty-six.
Addition six, up to addition sixteen. Forty-six.
Yeah, I'll throw a maximum.
Two. I'm writing, what am I number, thirty?
We're getting all this down.
I'm going to try, do I have to say it when we? I'm feeling comfortable with making the motion. If you guys are comfortable, oh, yeah, this is going to be messy. It'll be messy.
So.
You got to get a couple of A one.
Were you going to make a motion? I just want to ask.
But no, not till you're ready.
Done yet. Um. This is really nitpicky, but the sign standard say ninety-six square feet in aggregate. I think that's the word that's used. One second, I'll bring it up. I just want, I want, personally, I'd like to put a sign up on a piece of property in a couple of weeks and.
Probably.
So I'm asking for clarity.
God, fishing on expedition.
And I thought it was sixty-four feet per sign. It's a four, four, one. So it's twelve, four, four, one E, freestanding sign, building mounted signs or combination thereof in an aggregate size not to exceed ninety-six square feet in area shall be allowed. Provided no individual sign exceeds six and four square feet in area. Sixty-four square feet is eight by eight.
Really eight by twelve.
And then ninety-six is eight by twelve, so an individual sign cannot exceed sixty-four square feet.
In the, in the C U P, in this, in the question, the request.
Ninety-six for one side.
And I think we have that.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, you do have the latitude to deviate from the standards. Um, you just need to specify it in the findings of fact.
I'm glad that we brought this up.
Like a four thousand square foot sign, the C U P.
And I had notes on it. I had notes on A one that we were going to also modify that to, for the site plan to show wetlands, parking and fire lanes.
But I think that's going to be.
Or is that covered elsewhere and I can drop that.
I can summarize that, uh, I think accepting A one and A eight as amended, as, as suggested by staff. Would cover the fire lanes, the setbacks, the wetlands, the parking, the traffic circulation and the fire chief letter. Just taking those as, as suggested by staff, those two amendments.
Do we have to say that those were amended or suggested at the meeting and not in record? Correct, or, or can we just say as in the meeting or how do we do that when there's something?
As recommended by staff.
Is it been formalized?
It's not in the staff report and the record is going to reflect that. Um, it's both in red text for the record and also I tried to indicate that it wasn't my staff report, so the record should reflect that it is during the presentation, not in the staff.
So I don't even have to say all the phase one, phase two stuff. I have to say A one and A.
A one.
Eight, as amended, as recommended by staff, amended as.
Yes.
Okay.
And then we're eliminated.
Feel free to step in and help me out.
And then, so with, with those two, then there's um eliminate B four because I can scratch it out there.
Yeah, okay.
And then there's the applicant recommended that A six change to one parking space for two beds.
Yes.
I'm not against that. That's twenty-three parking spaces altogether.
And that was A six.
A six, so A six would be as recommended by the applicant. And then B five would be as recommended by the applicant of two forty-six beds or thirty beds for phase one and forty-six beds for phase two.
That's kind of.
I don't really understand the concern of the phase one, phase two thing, but whatever you guys think on that one.
That just helps them get it for me.
Okay.
So. Chad, does that make sense to you if I say and B five as re, as amended, as recommended by the applicant? You can grab that verbiage that he put in?
Yes, yeah, and the decision letter will reflect, um, however you wish to approve this tonight. That's what I'm tasked to do to fix it. Um, I would say if you're going to remove B four though, um, change B five to B four.
Yes, thank you. Do I need to speak to that or can I just call it B four?
We say well.
Say we modified, we've removed B four and modified B five to B four.
Yes. That's sufficient.
And amended as recommended by the applicant.
Yes.
Fun, we're having a good time here. All right. I moved to approve this project. M O D. Zero, 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 two dash two, two, requesting an expansion of an existing residential care facility from six thousand one hundred feet to eleven thousand three hundred and eighty feet. Finding that only the expansion of the existing residential care facility building and an additional. Six residences is in accordance with the general and specific.
Sixteen residents.
It says additional six.
She'll have to be amended.
We have to change.
Commission.
Or we have to change.
So here is where I'm adding the changes.
Yes, the motion will be amended.
Do I need to go back to the beginning? Need it again?
And here's the sixteen.
Okay, I'm looking at the staff report.
This one's wrong either way, the motion to approve because we have to re kind of create a new one that has all of our changes.
So if.
Yeah, but.
Yes.
And that has right, okay.
And but.
I moved to approve this project file, M O D zero, 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 two dash two, two, requesting that the number of residences on the property is allowed to expand from sixteen to forty-eight total. To forty-six total. Based on the following conclusions. Revert to. The decision. Yes, thank you. Um, additional sixteen residents.
Why I mean that it is in court.
Finding that it is in accord with the general and specific objectives of the Bonner County Comprehensive Plan and Bonner County Revised Code as enumerated in the following conclusions of law. And based upon the evidence submitted up to the time the staff report was prepared and testimony received at this here hearing. I further move to adopt the following finding facts and conclusions of law as written or as amended. I bet you want to. The um. Uh, condition A one. And A eight. As amended by. Uh, as amended, amended as recommended by the staff, condition A six. To be amended. For one parking lot. Per two beds. As in the uh code for the city of Sandpoint. To amend. Condition B four to be eliminated, condition B five to now be called condition B four. And to be amended as recommended by the. By the applicant. This action does not result in a taking of private property.
You have a motion in a second?
I second the motion, Commissioner.
That was indeed unusual. Uh the commissioner. Good job. Vote for my left face.
Commissioner Webster, aye.
Commissioner Moon Sky, aye.
Commissioner Kingsland, aye.
Mr. Wickley, aye.
Commissioner Marvel, aye. Motion carries, if I vote in favor and I'm going against.
Hopefully somebody got all that down.
The job. We didn't talk about page one or two, right?
I know, but. The chair awards three silver stars to Commissioner Kingsland for John Will Dunn on the motion.
I didn't, but I thought that by putting as amended by.
You said as recommend, amended as recommended by staff.
And the, and Chad, that's comfortable for you to be able to get the phase one and the phase two stuff in there?
Okay, he's gonna, he's gonna, say, Jenna, type it.
We can all watch the Zoom on YouTube.
You guys should have seen your faces when you started speaking.
Control distance.
Thank you guys so much, um Chad, so a site plan updated. To reflect everything that's about. And then that will be coming approved.
It's a modification to a conditional use permit, so this is the approved hearing. It doesn't go to the board of commissioners unless somebody tries to appeal it, so this is. Don't forget the fire lanes, the the decision's been made and now you guys are gonna work with the planning department to uh make it etched in stone.
Yeah, and I mean, you know, Christina's argument, you know, that it's very much needed. You know, absolutely, I think everybody understands it. And I was thinking about throwing that up, yeah, it's, you know, people are dying to get in these places, but that might not be the proper.
It was great for me to hear from the applicant that he has another similar type facility, much larger. It's and like, and and obviously it's a, it's nice to have the uh. This separate place where they can call their own, still walk in and out. And then as they grow, then it's a place they get to know, they feel good about moving into the, the final care part of that facility. I think it's a nice, nice setup and it'd be great as as a county if we had something set up more specific for this.
And I like.
We need five more.
Right, I like how the cabins can take work on that because sometimes a couple is together forever and then one of them fall into a place where they need twenty-four, seven. And you don't wanna have to separate the people.
You're right.
So that's a lovely thing when you can figure out all these.
That was the idea we had in bed.
Mister Director, you there and did you want to say anything before you uh, before we end this meeting?
So that was the idea.
Reminders, updates, announcements, admission.
I don't think we said.
Speak now forever.
We, we talking to me, Chair, sorry, I'm I'm hearing like a couple conversations.
Okay, did you wanna say anything to us tonight before we adjourn this meeting?
No, I don't have, I don't think any closing remarks on my side, so drive safe.
Travel safe, Jay.
Yeah.
Yeah, travel safe.
Come back one piece.
Okay, uh this hearing is adjourned until uh looks like September first.